Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 12, 2025 Academic Achievement Committee meeting. I am Jamal Jungle, Chair of the Academic Achievement Committee and a student member of Prince George's County Public Schools. I would like to welcome our committee representatives and board, committee members and board representatives, Dr. Tiffany Anderfull and Ms. Zakiya Goins McCants. A special welcome to Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer and Superintendent Designee, along with her team, who will be leading presentation tonight. Before we begin, we will have introd- We, before we begin, we will have introductions, starting with the board members, administrative staff, and board office. Of course, I've already introduced myself as the board chair, so any board members that would like to go on next?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Tiffany Anderfull, the Board Representative from District One.
Good evening, everyone. Zakiya Goins McCants, and I proudly represent District Eight.
Good evening, Kia McDaniel. I am sitting in for Dr. White. I am the Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, everyone. Trinell Bowman, Associate Superintendent for Special Education.
Good evening, everyone. I'm David Reese Jr., representing the work of the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging.
Good evening, everyone. Victoria Holmes, Coordinating Supervisor for Language and Literacy in the Office of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, everyone. Leona Smith, Innovation Officer for Transformation, Leadership, and Continuous Improvement.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosa Lopez. I'm the Board Administrative Secretary in support for this committee.
Yeah, I think that's everybody.
More, we have two more people.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm Melissa Kenny, the Supervisor for the English Language Development Office.
Good morning, afternoon, sorry. Jamie Bowers, I'm the Director of Testing, Research, and Evaluation.
Good evening. I'm Simone McQuage. I'm the Elementary Reading Language Arts Supervisor.
Hey, do we have anybody, everybody now? Anybody else that wanna come on? Are we good? Good? It's great. For those unable to join us live, a recording will be available on the PGCPS YouTube channel and Board Docs. Now we will proceed with roll call.
Mr. Jungle?
Present.
Dr. Anderfull?
Present.
Ms. Goins McCants?
Present.
There are three board members present.
There are three, three board members and a president, and we have a floor. If there are no adoptions, the committee shall adopt the May 12, 2025 meeting agenda. There being no objections, the meeting agenda is up to. If there are no corrections, the committee meeting shall approve the March of 17th meeting agenda. There being no corrections, the meeting minutes are approved. There are no public comments speakers this evening. So we'll move on to item 3.0, discussion items. The committee will receive one presentation from the administration tonight, followed by discussion for each presentation. I will now yield to, okay, it says Dr. Judith White, but um, I believe it's Dr. Kia McDaniel.
I can take it from here. And, and Mr. Jungle, just for your safety, we know that you're here, but we see that you're driving, so feel free to turn your camera off and listen in, because we need you to be safe.
Gotcha.
All right, but we, we know you're here, and then come on and ask us any questions as we get started, or as we wrap up the presentation. But good evening, everyone. We are excited to be here with you all this evening. We want to take this opportunity to just reflect on all of the lessons that we've learned throughout the year through the data and information that we were sharing with this committee. And so we have some very specific updates, again, around those lessons learned and what are our next steps for next school year. So based on the data that we shared with you, updates that we've already made, and our conversations with this committee, how we're going to be moving forward. So we'll be providing an overview in a variety of different areas. First, we'll start with equity and special education, move on to our comprehensive support and improvement, our CSI schools, and specifically the OGAAP project that was shared with the committee, look at the support we're providing to our multilingual learners through family engagement, and then dig into our DIBLES data, where we are now, and our benchmark data, and just how we plan to move forward. So with that, we're gonna get started with our presentation. Rosa, if you can bring up the slides for us, and I'm going to turn it over to our first set of presenters, Dr. David Reese and Ms. Trinell Bowman.
Are you able to see the slides?
Yes, we can see the slides, and if you would not mind advancing. Perfect. Thank you for handing over the baton, Dr. McDaniel. I am David Reese, and I am going to be speaking on behalf of Trinell Bowman and myself and our offices in the school system, and she'll be available with me to answer questions at the end of the presentation. And so the theme of the day would be lessons learned from the school year in the, in the spirit of academic achievement. And if I could title this presentation, the six minutes that I'm gonna share with you, I actually wrote it down, I would title it "The Power of Deep Inclusive Collaboration Among Departments in PGCPS." And I say that because you all can see this, what's behind me. You see Trinell Bowman and one of our students, who was in the eighth grade at the time, Tristan, who participated in a really powerful interview of the Superintendent of our school system. So Tristan was leading, and then, and then Trinell Bowman was his anchor to support him through the process, where they had a really powerful conversation around what does it mean to be a student with disabilities? Because the superintendent shared his story, and then talked about what it meant to lead for everyone, for all students in Prince George's County. So we got to hear that story that day, so that's what I'm hearkening behind me here. So when you see lessons from the field, we talked about the power of building strong, ongoing structures for collaboration across departments, and how that really helped us optimize learning for everyone. And this was our Equity Office's first time partnering as intentionally with another department in the school system. So we all came together, and we met, and we had to do a lot of organizing in order to be able to support the vision of the Department of Special Education, which meant learning more about their strategic plan, the goals that they were focused on, and then we were able to really put forth a really powerful professional learning plan for a day that then catapulted learning for the entirety of the school year. The second bullet that you see there, the, the small micro bullet, talks about feedback loops. I would really urge anyone who's engaging in this deep collaboration to be really intentional around how you collect and read survey data from participants about their experiences. So we heard from over 5,000 of the staff members directly through a survey around what their professional learning experiences were like, and the support that they needed in order to be better at their jobs to support students. We spoke to students throughout the year about what their learning experiences were, and we did a lot of deep work, really connecting with members of people who are advancing special education through IEP meetings throughout the system, really helping to sharpen our focus around how we were providing support and information to families, which we'll talk about more when we think about our next steps. And then third, there was this idea of co-creating goals and actions. And there was a lot of public accountability around how we designed the actions that we were going to take, and we held each other accountable for following through, for checking in, and then consistently through organized meetings, talking about the learning that was happening and the impact that was happening in the system. The second big bullet on the lesson side talks about SBELs, and that stands for School-Based Equity Leads. And they are the people who are funded by the system through my office to lead learning connected to equity goals at schools. What we learned was that there was a, we have 206 schools in PGCPS, and there were a lot of schools where we really saw school-based equity leads fully integrated into the work of the leadership team at the school, and they were really able to connect to what was happening with school performance planning goals, that's led by the Division of Accountability. And then we learned that there were some areas to increase that intentional collaboration at the school level to really support advancing the goals. And that will allow me to slide over to the right side, where we're gonna speak about our adjustments for next year. So in full transparency, we are undergoing a bit of an organizational restructure connected to the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging. It is now going to, it actually now, as of a couple of days ago, is now reporting to the Division of School Support and Leadership, and it's leaving the Division of Human Resources. This is significant, because our system is really, has a, has a laser focus on supporting school-based personnel, strengthening their skills and capacity to support families and students with disabilities, and moving the office closer to schools and what's happening in the area offices will give us direct connection with systemic professional learning meetings for principals and assistant principals, and will allow us to do the work of supporting the school-based equity leads with being more integrated in the work that, that's happening at, at the school leadership team level. So we're continuing our equity focus next year. For the first time in five years, we've decided to not pick up a new equity focus, but continue with this very special topic, because we made a lot of ground, we've broken a lot of ground, have a lot of deeper understanding around inclusive practices. I really want to make sure that we leave with full understanding that more of our families and students had experienced a better PGCPS as a result of our work. So we'll be collecting lots of data through family surveys, through the Department of Special Education, about their experiences in the IEP process and adjusting along the way. Second, the Department of Special Education and the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging are going to go deeper in our focus with elementary schools, because that is the place where most families first are able, are first learning about the disabilities that their students have. That's where many families are being introduced to PGCPS, and we really want to make sure that we catch them early and then build really strong relationships as the students matriculate all the way through graduation in PGCPS. So Area One means elementary schools, and we have a plan that's linked where we're going to do a lot of intentional work with school leaders from the elementary schools. And last, PGCPS will shift our emphasis from raising awareness about disabilities. So that was our big goal, making sure that more people were aware of the impact that disabilities have on people, on people's lived experiences, et cetera. But now we want to move more towards making sure that the awareness leads to a shift in practice from district personnel and school-based personnel, so that we can actually see the school performance goals moving. I know that we're gonna do a lot of work with meetings around data, and you should expect to see a lot of new information coming to you about how teacher teams are collaborating in the service of data connected to students with disabilities. So thank you for hearing this part of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Reese. We'll turn it over to Leona to walk us through her lessons learned in support of our CSI schools implementing OGAAP.
Thank you, everyone. I'm so glad and pleased to follow. Oh, I see there's a hand. Should I keep going, or?
Take the hand.
I am just wondering if for, if Committee Chair Jungle would permit a slight change to our normal, our normal rounds, and if we could maybe ask questions as you all go through, just so we don't lose them as we're writing them.
Um, Rosa, Rosa, am I allowed to?
Um, you're, you're speaking to have a discussion per, um, presentation?
Yeah.
Um, yes, I think that that can be feasible to have a, a discussion.
Is that just if objection?
Um, so I'm, I'm thinking the whole presentation, I mean, it has different components, correct? So I think as a whole, like, they're trying to just have, you don't need a, I, I don't believe you need a, a separate emotion to have a discussion. You will just break it into small discussions.
Okay. Um, all right, if, if it's to the superintendent's team, is it okay if we ask questions at components? No problem?
Yeah, this, yeah, this, that's okay. If you like to go, that, that's what Ms. Goins McCants would like to have a discuss, set of discussions after each presentation.
Only if that will work better for how everybody else works. Dr. Anderfull?
I don't know the full-on, full agenda, but how many, how many, it, it looks like we're following a pattern of just doing some lessons learned over all of the different presentations that have happened this year. So how many will there be?
There are five.
Okay. Yeah, do you mind if we do it that way?
Yeah, we can do it that way.
Otherwise, we're like taking notes and then kind of circling back, and it might.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Um, board members, do we have any questions?
And Rosa, you'll just be mindful of the time.
That is correct. So you basically have two rounds of 2.5 each.
Yeah. Um, board members, do we have any questions for the first component?
Let me go back to that slide, um, just that we can have that up.
I believe Ms. Goins McCants, uh,
Yeah. I see it. Um, I was just waiting for them to put the slide back up, so that.
Yeah.
Yeah, she says, oh, um, can we, you know, slide, whatever, you know?
Give me one moment, please.
I'm getting ready for these, the questions now.
Okay. Um, are you able to see this slide?
I think she's waiting to be acknowledged. Um.
Yes.
Yeah, we can see the slides. Um, Ms. Goins McCants?
Thank you so much. So thank you all so much for your presentation earlier and for putting this together. Part of, well, the first thing I wanted to ask is, this second year focus, are you all adding anything new, or are you continuing the same thing and doing the shifts that you spoke here, spoke of here?
I'll start by answering, and I'll let David jump in. So this year, we did have three areas of focus that we wanted schools and districts to look at, which was family engagement, especially design instruction and inclusive practices. But those were from the lens of more of an awareness of, as we think about students with disabilities. And now, as we talked about, the shift is to really go deeper into those three areas. And then I'll let David give his perspective.
Absolutely. So one of the big, we had some resounding feedback from a number of staff members who were school-based, who said, "We really learned a lot about disabilities that we did not know before." And these are a lot of general educators and special educators, and what they told us was, "We now need to have more hands-on practices using the tools and using some of the programs or supplementary materials that we have for students with disabilities, so that we can actually get better at it." So that's one of the more, um, one of the adjustments that we want to make, so that the professional learning is hands-on and relevant to what they're doing in classrooms with their students.
And then my only other part is the plan to increase family engagement in the special education process for the rest of the time. If you all could give us a bit of a, a bit more of detail about that.
Absolutely. Let me give you one major highlight. So I am, um, and there's some work that's really important to me, that's about helping schools improve. It's called SystemWise, and one of the grounding tenets of it is about being radically inclusive. And so we know that we've heard from a lot of parents via CCAC meetings and other spaces around some of their hopes for how PGCPS can improve. So this year, when we kick off our summer learning, for example, we are start, we, we, for five years, our equity work has been focused on helping staff members engage. We're bringing families and staff together at the same time during the summer to learn and hear from one another together in a collaborative space. So we're pushing ourselves, because we know that families come with a lot of emotion and a lot of hope and sometimes pain about how their students are being serviced. And in order for our students to get better served, we know that we have to have those conversations where the tension might be high, learn from one another, and then get better as a result. So you should expect to see more of that type of collaboration as we move forward.
And then the other thing I would add is a more cohesive approach around Dr. Jackson Shop, who has parent engagement assistance. We also have resolution partners in our area office, and then we have the Special Family Support Center. So those three bodies coming together to be intentional about what is the survey results saying to us, and where do we need to go deeper around family engagement strategies at targeted schools? But then also bringing to bear and highlighting those schools where we have great outcomes on our survey. What are they doing? And be able to learn from one another in that space.
Thank you both so much.
All right, Leona, you're up, unless we have other questions. We do.
Dr. Anderfull?
Yes. Um, so you, you mentioned the, the, the shifting of where the office will be placed, and you spoke to as one of the, as highlights or things that you're, I guess, most excited about with regards to the shift, is that you'll be closer to the work of, you know, work most, work that is more closely aligned with families, um, if I, if I heard you correctly. Can you speak a little bit more about the shift and decision to move, um, move the location of this, of this office? And, you know, if, if there are any other benefits or things that you see that would really be, uh, again, this, what would be beneficial to this move and any other rationale for the move?
Absolutely. I'll try to get as, as detailed as I can in this space. So the move really just happened last Monday. Um, so it's relatively new. So when we actually put this presentation together, that move had, that shift had not happened yet. Um, and so the idea is that I am now the Associate Superintendent for Transformation, Leadership, and Continuous Improvement, and there'll be several offices that will report to me, which is inclusive of the Equity Office. So because I will now be seated at the table with the area office leadership, it means that as we're having our collaborative conversations and dialogue, that it will be the core, the, the core team that I'll be working with most prominently, and that is the entry point into school. So I think that some of the rationale was around moving equity from human resources to the place where we want to see the rubber hit the road more, more, more dramatically, and that's where children are.
Right. Okay. Can I have a minute and 15? Okay. And then the proposal that you linked here for, blah, 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 so for bullet point two on the right-hand side, um, this plan to increase family engagement in the special education process, the proposal for elementary Area One principals. Um, I know Board Member Goins McCants asked about this. I'm looking at it, and I guess I'm just wondering, I'm assuming that you've already presented this. Um, is that correct? You've already presented this?
Yes, the Department of Special Education in my office presented it to the Area One team to get the feedbacks that we can kind of build and co-create from a draft, um, that we want to then move forward with.
Did you receive any, like, just what was the reception to, to what was shared?
They were really, I, I think the Area One Principal Supervisors and other people in that office were really excited that we had a vision for how consistent principal, school leader professional learning would, um, would happen, so that we could actually support them with the learning that they needed to advance these, uh, to advance the goals. I think that's the, the short answer. Would love to talk to you more about that sometime.
Perfect. Thank you for sharing it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, board members, are there any other questions? Okay. Um, I don't have currently any questions, so we can get to, we can go to the next component.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm so pleased to be, um, uh, following the equity conversation, because it really is aligned to this next part, as we think about the instructional needs of our students as well. And that's an additional part of our equity work, is ensuring access and opportunity to high-quality instruction, that our students are doing well. And as you may have recalled, that we have 24 schools that are identified as comprehensive support and improvement schools, um, from the, from MSDE. And actually, many of them have been identified in needing to improve outcomes specifically for students with disabilities. And so the work that Mr. Reese and Ms., and Ms. Bowman, Dr. Reese and Ms. Bowman were talking about, really is integral to that. So in support of our CSI schools and our principals, there are many, um, we pull them to, pull the leaders together to do professional development, um, there are tools, templates. But really, part of the work is also ensuring that our teachers, that we are building their capacity as well. Our students have access to wonderful interventions and supports. We also want to ensure that we are bringing our teachers along to build their capacity to think differently and deeply about how students are performing. And so this year, we implemented the Ongoing Assessment Project, or OGAAP. And it is a, um, professional development around how we look at student work in four domains. And that's addition, multiplication, fractions, and proportional reasoning. And so over 150 teachers participated in four days of professional development, um, in which they dug deeply not into the content of what they teach, but the pedagogy, meaning how they teach it, so that when they're looking at student work, they have a math progression of how the brain learns math to understand what they might teach next. And so, um, we are pleased to share that when participants were given self-assessments, um, as we, as we're closing up the year around this first initial year of the project, 90% of those who completed our survey have shared they have a much better understanding of how to teach math content. They spend their first full day of those four days really just learning math. And when you think about many of our elementary, particularly, um, teachers, their degree in elementary education is a generalist degree, so they learn a little bit about everything. And so this gave them an opportunity to dig more specifically into just learning math content. 85% of them also shared that as a result of working through these four days, they feel more confident that they can take a piece of student work, analyze it next to a progression, and a progression means like a steps in which the way you learn a skill or learn math, that they knew how, they know how to plan what's next. 76% are saying they are seeing improvement in their students' everyday work. We don't have our end-of-the-year assessment data yet, but they are seeing that day-to-day improvement. And then 60% of them have reported that they would love to continue if there was coaching available. As part of this project, in addition to those four days, all participants received some level of follow-up. Small group coaching, one-on-one coaching. We had the coaches from, um, the OGAAP initiative in the schools at their collaborative meetings, so they all had some additional touchpoints to have a thought partner and give them feedback. To support this work, we also pulled our principals together multiple times to ensure that they understood um, what, what to look for, um, in their collaborative planning meetings, how to monitor, monitor this work. Most recently, they all brought their math leaders with them as well. In surveying our principals, 65, 63% of them said that they saw an increase in math achievement. Um, I will say, lessons learned from the field, as we think about, like, anytime you implement something across multiple schools, um, who's leading the project really is impactful. And so when the school team launched with a full math team and the math lead was the person who also received training alongside the teachers, we saw a significant difference in maybe the implementation of the work. And so we're thinking about that as we adjust for moving forward. So moving into next year, uh, we will really be focusing, as Dr. Reese shared, on looking at weekly data meetings, how we're using data with our collaborative teams, and really digging into pulling out those student math progressions, using group planning protocols, looking at data work. Um, in terms of OGAAP, if we are to, when we're continuing this work, we want to ensure that it's aligned to our curriculum so that our teachers know exactly where things fit in. And then many schools have been reaching out to say, "How do I get additional coaching next year?" Right? Our teachers feel so efficacious, they feel like they can teach math well now, and we want to keep them having contact with the coaches if possible. And then finally, we are, um, many people on this call are working collaboratively to design and launch, um, district school support teams that will help with implementation, not only of OGAAP, but really of all supports of how we monitor instruction, um, how we, having math walkthroughs and that coaching support. So we're really pleased with this first year of implementation. We had a lot of success, particularly from the teacher perspective. And as we move into next year, we just, we want to ensure that access to coaching and really that weekly data meeting and that district support team. Are there any questions?
Yeah, so, so we have all board members having a question. Um, I think it was Dr. Anderfull first.
Yes. Um, thank you for sharing this, um, information. I, I remember, um, when you came, you all came and gave the initial presentation, so great to see the lessons learned here. Um, I'm just wondering, um, so, so I see that over 150 teachers participated, and that the, the data that you're showing here is of those who self-reported. Um, what's the sample size here? Um, how many participants actually completed the, the survey?
It was about 70, about almost half.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'll probably went around to Jamal if we can.
Okay. Um, Ms. Goins McCants?
My apologies. I didn't realize I hadn't turned, uh, my camera back on. My apologies, I didn't realize I hadn't turned uh my camera back on. Um, thank you all so much for this presentation. I guess my question is a little bit off of the concept and more on the overall section. How did you all get to, and I know you gave us some of, you know, some of this information, but how did you all get to OGAAP as the concept for addressing our CSI schools? And do we have any sort of? I know it's not, we are not coming up on a designation year, and so our CSI schools are not cycling out right now, but do we have um alternative ways of seeing that our CSI schools are closer to getting out of status? And how do you all know that this particular program is helping with that?
Thank you. I'll first start with your first question. Um, so MSDE provided a list of some research-based practices, initiatives, and approaches that they were saying these would be good ones for you to explore. And so OGAAP was one that was listed on there. Additionally, there were several members within the executive leadership team who had had personal experience utilizing this approach in other districts and saw significant gains, particularly when done more than one year, right? The first time you implement something, again, I think if you saw my lesson learned, having that math leader was key. There are things that make it more impactful. Um, as you, your question around just are, how are we ensuring that we're making impacts? We have a couple of things in place. There there are new quarterly monitoring reflection um tools that our schools are are using to say this is what happened this quarter and looking at data and re- reporting on that. You also are correct, this is not the year that they can exit out. They have to show improvement this year and next year um in all of the groups in which they were identified in order to um officially exit this status, as well as not be in the bottom five percent of all schools ranked across the state of Maryland. So there's quite a rigorous process. So we do have our benchmark data, we have our school-based data, and then we will have MK the MCAP data. It's going to have to be members of this group, area teams to put triangulate all that together at the at the end of this school year to see where we are, um, so that we can recalibrate for next year.
Thank you so much for that additional context. I'm really excited about the integration of weekly data meetings. Is that happening in all schools? Or all schools, all subjects, or just math?
That's a great uh great question. So we are very excited. It will be all schools. Um, our principals are getting professional development. On Wednesday, every assistant principal is getting professional development, so that when we launch, we have lots of uh people that feel like they can lead that work, and then every school is also identifying a teacher leader. That teacher leader, we are requesting that it is someone who does math and or writing about the work. So if you think about our MCAP data, often in our in our benchmark, it's the writing portion in which students are sometimes not engaging in the writing about their work, whether it's writing about math, writing about literacy. And so next year, when we launch weekly data meetings, schools will have a choice with some coaching based off their data of whether they want to do it specifically around math or writing and or both.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Dr. And if all, I think second round, right?
Yes, sorry, that was actually um what my 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 question was about, about the weekly data meetings. Um, so I made an assumption, um, and so correct me if I'm wrong. I assumed, or I thought, that there were already weekly data meetings happening um across the district. Um, and so if if I'm wrong about that, can you tell me how these will differ? I'm wondering also, you know, like I know there are a number of organizations I previously worked for, um Relay Graduate School, um, that institute, you know, that had a really great um, you know, way of leading weekly data meetings. I'm just wondering how you all are going about doing these, if you're using any specific models.
You set me up perfectly, Dr. And if all. That is what we're doing. We are launching the relay version of weekly data meetings out of the Relay Graduate School of Education. And so you're correct, we have, I want to make sure that the public and everyone knows watching, our schools are working really hard. They are they are using collaborative meetings every week across the school system. What we are, what we are trying to do is to get some cohesion, alignment, and some fidelity to a specific protocol to ensure that we're really leaving that meeting all crystal clear about what's my reteach next step and then coming back and checking on it. So we are very pleased to be partnering with the Relay Graduate School of Education to ensure that all of our school-based leaders um have a common protocol, common language, common way to look and unpack um some work and look at data, and then also bringing along our teacher leader. So that is the, that's what makes it a little bit different. Um, right now, we have a a wonderful collaborative framework here that we use. We're just digging a little deeper in, pulling out either the math and or the writing.
That is fantastic to hear. Um, I previously served as their Vice President of Partnerships and very familiar with the weekly data meetings and have actually seen it be extremely effective um in a number of school districts. So excited to hear that that is the model you all are going to proceed with. Excited to hear, thank you.
Um, Mrs. Goyens McCants, second round?
Thank you. I'll just give both of my questions so you can have the time to answer it in the division. Um, with the weekly data meetings and that shift specifically to the relay model, number one, how are you all addressing the, I guess, concerns about how that looks different for high school? Um, and then the other question is, so does this mean as a system we are moving away from data-wise completely? Or is there some sort of hybrid or, I guess, phase-out period?
Great questions, and I may not have a full answer to your second question. Um, but for your first question, the the um the Relay Graduate um School of Education model really is a K-12 model that can be applied for any subject. And actually, I think parts of it work well with secondary because many of our secondary teachers are such content experts, right? They went to school for math, and then they added on maybe the teaching degree, where sometimes elementary, not all, some of them maybe have the elementary piece, but maybe not the math. And so the protocol really leans heavily on you having content knowledge. So we actually anticipate that many of our secondary um teachers and leaders will um feel very comfortable with the the content piece. It's the part of pulling it together. To your question around data-wise, we do have an implementation team that is launching sort of what's our plan around this to ensure that we were thinking through all the pieces, um, thinking through who needs professional development, how we're monitoring implementation. Um, and that team is still in, is still right now processing through that. So I don't believe we yet answered your question, but I'll make sure we take that back.
I'll go ahead and take a quick stab at it. Um, you can't say data-wise and not have David Reese comment, given that I'm doing a lot of work with that process. So data-wise is really about how, it it's a way of being, it's a way of collaboration, it's a way about looking at data together. And whereas there are eight steps to the process, we really are encouraging people to use the aspects of data-wise that work for you, that help sustain your practices. And there are, there's a lot that can be integrated. Um, so that's the other part of your question.
Thank you both so much.
Okay, um, I had one question, so this, I think this is my first round. I was just kind of wondering, um, I think it was um, Board Member Goyens McCants that um, or I think it was uh, Dr. And if all. Either one, um, that said that um from the hundred and fifty, about only seventy um ended up actually, you know, pull it, like, I guess, having their detailed report. So I was wondering, what is the um initiative that we could be able to do, or um strategy we're going to be able to do to try to get at least a hundred percent, or at least, maybe not a hundred percent, maybe like ninety, you know, for next year?
You have asked the magical question that we ask ourselves all the time. And actually, um, one strategy that seems most effective in moving forward is something is that we have to get that feedback right there. So if we've got the teachers there or we're together in a meeting, we have a much higher rate of response than when we say we send it out and say, please, complete this. So most recently, when the teachers got this, they're all out. We did not feel it was appropriate right around MCAP testing to pull them all out, to do an assessment when they're all, you know, however, that is something we're going to be mindful moving forward that when we get feedback together in person and we provide that work time right there to do it, we're more more likely to get a fuller picture. So we'll keep that in mind as we think about how we're going to monitor next year.
That's great, sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board members, do we have any other questions, or do we want to move on to the next component?
No more questions.
Okay, um.
Okay, good evening. Um, tonight I'm going to focus your attention on another ax- aspect of educational or educational mission, and I apologize. I'm losing my voice from a cold, um, but I'll do the best I can, and we're going to be focusing on our family engagement of our multilingual learners. As we all know, family engagement is the cornerstone of student success. But it takes an even greater significance when we look at our multilingual learners. They often face unique challenges, including language barriers, cultural differences, and navigating unfamiliar educational systems. And so as we've prioritized this group, we're not only focusing on our students, but we're helping to empower entire families and their communities. Um, and this year with our family engagement specialist, Ms. Santos, she's been doing amazing work. She's unable to be here tonight as she's leading the work with our parents in the International Parent Leadership Consortium. And so with her in that role, we have been doing many things. So if you look on the the left-hand side, there's four key things I want to talk about. Through our collaboration with various stakeholders, we focus a lot with our English language development teachers to make sure they meet the needs of our multilingual learners. We've enhanced our collaboration with the Principal Parent Engagement Assistance and Community School Coordinators. And we felt that that's helped to foster family engagement. And it helps the schools to be more strategic and goal-oriented with their family engagement efforts. And so this year, schools have hosted thirty-nine family engagement events, keeping in mind that this is all self-reported. Um, and when we shared the schools that had reported, we had a lot of schools add to that list. The other thing that we've noticed is that our parents in the leadership groups, we have the International Parent Leadership Consortium and our Family Engagement Steering Committee. Those families that are in those um two groups, they feel more empowered, they're excited to share their voice, and they're excited to take leadership roles, not only for their child's education, but for their school and their families within their school. And so right now, we have twenty-seven families that are engaged in district-led uh leadership opportunities and that are excited to grow and lead in the district. The other thing we noticed was that translation and interpretation is essential, and that allowing parents to participate in engagement effort in a hybrid model helped them to participate better. So we had uh the Family English Literacy Program, which was a recommendation of the board. We started it this year with two schools as a pilot, and we've actually increased to four, which was not our intent, but schools were excited and started on. We found that having the translation interpretation was essential, but also that allowing them to come either in person, virtually, or blended allowed more families to participate. So so far this school year, when we only started this spring, we've had fifty-six families participate in the family literacy program. They're starting with excuse me, component one. Give me one second. Didn't want to cough in your ear. And then we're starting to write the curriculum for uh levels two, three, and four. The other thing we noticed was that having customi- customizable templates or PowerPoint presentations, as well as resources for our schools, made it much easier for them to host events. A lot of schools were scared and didn't know where to start. And so we've created resources and they're just eager to provide events for our families. So some of the things that we've learned and that we're hoping to improve upon next year and even as we continue into this year. So we really want to move our schools from hosting events to involving our parents. So we want them to be a part of helping to plan events, plan things for the schools, and leading sessions, and not just attending a session and saying they came. The other thing we want to work on is though we had ninety school, ninety-two schools participate in our professional development, to lead family engagement, you can see only thirty-nine reported that they held engagement. So we're looking at ways that we can provide additional um support to the schools that didn't actually um provide an event by coaching or peer observation, and then we're actually looking at the schools that didn't even come to their professional development and how we can get all schools involved. And then the other thing we noticed is that our families engaged in the International Parent Leadership Consortium really feel empowered and want to lead in their schools. And so we're looking at the ways that we can move it from having a district-led International Parent Leadership Consortium creating something at the school level. That is all I have for this evening. Let me know if you have any questions.
Yeah, okay, sorry, my volume went down for some reason. Um, oh, well, I was gonna say, board members, do you have any questions? Um, this goes against.
Thank you so much for the presentation. My only uh question was going to be about what the plan is in terms of moving from that district to school ownership of this International Parent Leadership Consortium. Is that like a is there a concrete plan for that, or are you all currently just in the start stages of it?
So the International Parent Leadership Consortium is something that Dr. Love started many, many years ago and something that other districts have modeled after us. And we took a little break post-COVID or during COVID and post-COVID, and we just started it again this spring. And it's just a lesson that we learned this spring, so we haven't formalized the plan. But I believe it would probably be very similar to what we created, the templates and the resources, so that the schools have exactly what they need, and then having the coaching from Ms. Santos. But I don't have it finalized yet.
And then your office would still support the individual schools as they are navigating that. I'm thinking about like staffing and all of those things.
Yes, so the schools are eager and they want to host their own events, and oftentimes, schools have the funding. And then we would also still need to have a central office, International Parent Leadership Consortium for the schools that aren't able to do it at their school or may not have enough interest.
Thank you.
Dr. And if all?
Yes, so my question was somewhat along those uh along the lines, or at least thinking about capacity. So understanding that, you know, I think across the board, there's an interest to expand everything um that you've you've piloted this year. Can you um give us a sense, and perhaps you spoke to this last time, um, about what the capacity um is or what staff is needed, both um from administration, from individual schools? Can you give us a sense of um, right, like how many people are actually needed to successfully? Um, if it's just in hosting, you know, one school, um, you know, just what is the need and where are we right now in terms of our capacity to support?
To host the International Parent Leadership Consortium at the school level? Is that what you're asking, Dr.?
That and the Family English Literacy Program, just like what is our role in supporting and what does our capacity look like to to expand further?
So right now, for the Family Literacy, English Literacy Program, a lot of schools were already hosting family literacy programs. They just didn't have a structure, and so we've created the structure and made it easier for them. They currently use staff and provide, provide them with workshop pay or their hourly wage in the evening, and it usually takes one or two teachers. And it's about a ten to fifteen-week session. And a lot of schools are interested in doing multiple sessions, so we're working to create that curriculum. As for the Parent International Parent Leadership Consortium, we right now have two people leading it, and it takes about six sessions. Um, and so we're just thinking about whether we would have a school do a fall session and a spring session. We hadn't really looked at how many people would be involved as we just started that plan. But those are great questions, thank you.
I'd just like to note that um Dr. Candy's partnership with the uh Sheila Jackson's team, with our parent engagement um assistants, um, some of the positions that we have available in the community schools are really going to serve as partners in this work as well of just getting it, getting um a structure, as she mentioned, to other schools to be able to model and implement with their parent populations. And so many of our schools do have the staff, they are doing individual programs and really want some support around how can we really formalize this and, you know, have that repetition and be able to really continue to have um parents as our partners in a variety of different ways. And so they'll definitely serve as a support in this area as well.
That's great to hear, thank you. I was wondering, you know, how, were there, you know, if capacity was an issue, we're trying, the goal of sustainability, had we thought about, you know, partnerships or just how were we going to scale? Um, so that's great to hear. Thank you.
Um, I if I didn't have any questions for the multilingual ones, I think the board members kind of answered mine. Um, so is there any other questions, or do we want to move on to the next component? Yeah, I think you guys are ready for, I think we're ready for the next component.
Good evening. So I'm going to share the left side of the
Good evening. So I'm going to share the left side of the lessons learned from the DIBELS assessment. And then Simone is going to share um some next steps for next school year based on the data. So uh we are currently in the window when we're administering our end-of-year DIBELS data. So based on our beginning and middle of year, uh we're looking at students who are being identified for at-risk. Uh, and then our end-of-year DIBELS data is what we submit to the state for overall, uh how many students um we deem at risk for reading difficulties. So this being through your trend, uh we're looking at an average of about three percent um of growth across all four of our grade levels in DIBELS uh since our start three years ago. Uh, looking at the trend in early literacy rates uh can in comparison to Prince George's County across the nation, uh the number of Prince George's County students uh across grades three, K to three and the well below benchmark remains consistent at an average of about forty-two percentage points, which is about twelve percent higher than the national average of all other students taking the DIBELS assessment across the nation. So we've shared in the past um the four identified areas that we have targeted in DIBELS uh for kindergarten, our phonemic awareness. First grade is our letter sounds or nonsense word fluency. Second grade, it's our reading fluency, and third grade, it's our reading comprehension. And just to speak a little bit more clearly about those in depth. Uh, and looking at our kindergarten, we have about sixty-one percent of our kindergarten students performed well below on our phonemic awareness uh subtest on DIBELS. And in comparison, we're also administering the I-Ready assessment, and about fifty percent of our kindergartners performed one or more grade levels below in that same category. And that's why we identified that as an area of need for our kindergarten students uh at the middle point of the year. For our first graders, we looked at uh letter sounds or our word fluency. And a little more specifically on our DIBELS assessment, we had about forty-five percent of our first graders score in the well below uh subtest of word fluency. And in comparison on our I-Ready assessment, looking at that same skill type, we had about sixty-three percent of our students in first grade score one or more year below grade level. Moving to second grade, we identified reading fluency as a challenge. Uh, and looking at our DIBELS data, we had about forty-four percent of our second graders who were scoring well below at the middle point of the year on reading fluently. And in comparison on our I-Ready assessment, about sixty percent of our second graders. Uh, and so there is a little bit of a disparity between those two data points, but they're they're not exactly aligned, but we're more looking across on both assessments and we're looking for the biggest gaps or challenges. Um, you can see that these ones that we've identified um are highly um challenging based on the data. Then finally, our last uh for third grade is our reading comprehension. And looking more specifically at our DIBELS data, we had about fifty percent, fifty-six percent of our students scoring well below on reading comprehension, and about seventy percent of our students uh achieving one or more grade levels below. And we'll talk a little bit more about our third grade students when we talk about our benchmark data.
So I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about um some of the adjustments or next steps. Um, as we worked over the course of this school year, uh there was um an evolution in the way we looked at um our ongoing um scoring support. And so what we want to do next year is to continue to provide scoring refreshers prior to each testing administration to ensure fidelity of scoring. What we found is that um these sessions provided um teachers an opportunity to address some of those scoring challenges that they had. Um, it clarified any updates to scoring protocols, and it provided them some guided practice with exemplar student data. Uh, during, this wasn't something that we just did during um these quarterly scoring refreshers. We also implemented the same kind of practice during our professional learning communities. Um, we believe that um these sessions truly are catered for our new teachers as well as our experienced teachers, and we're doing them in a variety of ways. So teachers can come to in-person workshops, they can participate in virtual webinars, and they can also participate in some of the recorded modules and um resources provided to them on the DIBELS site. We have two DIBELS coaches that work with our schools um across the district. And although we have um utilized them to target a lot of our schools with um that we're lacking reading leader support um or coaching support, we want to next year target those schools that are not experiencing the expected growth. Um, during these coaching visits, we do, the coaches do a variety of things. They conduct on um site data reviews and talk about some of the root cause analysis, and they provide customized professional learning for the teachers, the reading leaders, or um, and then talk more about some of the instructional adjustments um that need to happen. We are also looking to provide um professional development on planning for focus group instruction. So when we talk about that differentiated small group support that happens over the course of that reading block, we want our teachers to use formative, their formative assessment data. And they get that information through their progress ma- uh monitoring data um as well as the formative assessments from um from some of their DIBELS information, but also from their um really great reading um platforms. We're looking at our students, um our, I'm sorry, um during our professional development sessions, we're looking at student learning gaps, we're um going back and looking at our resources to help teachers understand how all of those things align. And we found that in our professional learning communities, it gave teachers not only confidence, but more clarity. And so we want to continue doing that for the upcoming school year. Last but not least, we provided high dosage tutoring this year, and we want to continue that um next year, looking at our targeted students who are well below um or below benchmark um could on the DIBELS assessment. We are also planning to implement M-class intervention to deliver targeted skills practice. So M-class intervention will be new to and accessible to all of our comprehensive schools in the fall. Um, the other piece with that high dosage tutoring is the ongoing monitoring that takes place. So we'll be able with our um with our partnerships, with our tutoring companies to monitor the student progress and adjust those tutoring plans for those students um who need it and those students who are able to exit out so that we can provide those services to others. Any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions? This goes against.
I always keep, I'm gonna wait for you to say it next time before I hit the buttons. Um, thank you so much for this presentation. My question was kind of, you talked a little bit about the di- district DIBELS coaches. So are they reading specialists? What's the training that these, our DIBELS coaches have um to be able to support schools in this manner? And then the providing professional development, can you talk more about how that's offered? Like, is that virtual? Is it in person? Do teachers opt in? How does, what does that look like?
So we do a combination of things. Uh, first with the DIBELS coaches, we are able to have Amplify DIBELS coaches. So there's specifically, these are uh these two individuals have worked in in their previous experiences, have worked in schools implementing DIBELS, have also worked as coaches um in their schools, training teachers, and now they work for Amplify, providing those services specifically to the teachers of Prince George's County Public Schools. Um, so we have our two um coaches that work. Uh, they kind of split up with uh the schools across the district. Um, when we talk about our professional um learning, it is varied. Um, right now, we offer those opportunities, many of those opportunities after school. We tried this past year to look at our professional learning community with a session during the day for teachers who had um who had substitutes and were willing to come out during um during the day, during the afternoon, early afternoon, and then we had a session in the evening. And so um and the, there were teachers who were not able to get subs, and they came to the evening session. Uh, we have looked at doing some of these sessions virtually, and we have them scheduled throughout each and every quarter. Um, in addition to site-based sessions. So those sessions um with the coaches can vary based on the needs. And they have provided professional development at some of those sites. Um, in addition to, we have um our elementary literacy support teachers, which are coaches who worked to work here in the district. Um, and they've been also providing professional development at their schools and their assigned schools, and they work to support the teachers during collaborative planning and data analysis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions?
No other questions.
No other questions?
Let's say if there's an opportunity for a second round, I just had one question about the high dosage tutoring.
Yeah, we can give a second.
So with the continuing to provide high dosage tutoring specifically around DIBELS, is this offered in the school building, like during the school day, or is it very depending on the partner?
We um for Amplify tutoring, it is offered during the school day. So our schools are able to coordinate it with their schedules so that tutoring takes place at a time when it is not direct instruction for the teacher. So it may be um while the teacher is working with small groups and students are working on different tasks, their um their tutor is virtual in that instance. Um, we have two other tutoring um companies who are working within the district at select schools. And so um one of those is actually, I think they're both face-to-face. And those um in those situations, this, the tutor is set up outside that grade level or outside that classroom, and the tutor goes to pick up the students that they're working with. Um, some of the other high dosage tutoring that we're doing in the district are individual as opposed to small group tutoring.
Got it.
And just to add, the tutoring that um Simone is discussing is paid for with um grant funds that we have this district-wide with schools that she's targeting. But then we also have individual schools that are using their funding, whether it be through Title One or community schools funding, a variety of different funding, where they're working with different partners to have high doses tutoring during the school day as well.
Thank you for that additional context.
Dr. Anaful?
Yes, um, so I'm calling asking questions about the high dosage tutoring um during the board meeting where you all um shared out. Um, and I guess what my wondering is, and given what you also just shared, Dr. McDaniel, I'm I'm very familiar with high dosage tutoring and, you know, what are the specific components that make it effective? Uh, it sounds to me, if I recall from the presentation that you all gave um previously, um to your point, there are select number of schools that were receiving it. Um, because we know of its effectiveness, um obviously, there's a hope that we would be able to offer this to to many more um schools. Um, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole um at the moment, but should a school um, you know, have additional funds for, uh, you know, perhaps, you know, the community schools um um dollars, things, how could they go about, is there a way that, you know, they could go about contacting someone um to say, hey, we're interested in this, we don't know where to start? Would you all be able to connect them to Amplify or any of our other partners? How would we, how would they go about doing that?
So to
I'll let you start and then I'll follow up.
Certainly. So um one of the things that we did was to share, we created a flyer um with information, actually, if I go back, we uh also had information sessions over the course of the school year, open to any principal who is interested in learning more about Amplify tutoring. Um, we were able to present a little bit of of, give them an overview of the um of the program and our data at the last um at the, I want to say March Principals Meeting. Um, we created a flyer to put out into the Area One Updates um and the Area Two, to be shared with the Area Two administrators to give them um information about Amplify tutoring and the contacts for our sales rep and um information around the cost. Um, with the community schools, there is, uh they've reached out to um my office to kind of talk through some of the tutoring that they are considering so that we can all be on the same page. And um those community schools are given opportunities to learn more about those additional tutoring um companies that they could uh take a look at for the upcoming school year. Dr. McDaniel?
Yeah, I was gonna say exactly that. Um, the community schools office actually has a RFP out for tutoring companies so that we can standardize the tutoring options that are open to our schools and um better utilize our financial resources, so there aren't these individual contracts with each individual school. Um, and so we worked with them and other funding partners, our Title One Office, um and in some case, uh cases, our CSI schools, to kind of compile this list. And so they're wrapping up with that um that RFP now to make sure that all of the standards for tutoring are aligned to the National Student Support Accelerator to make sure that it actually is um high dosage tutoring and I'm supporting our students. So we hope to have a list of six or seven vendors that are able to support our district, um support our schools, and then work as a district around the contracting process so that um we can maximize uh the use of funds through, you know, targeted vendors. And then, of course, um Simone oversees elementary reading, but there's tutoring in other areas as well that sometimes people want to look into. Um, and so making sure that we have, you know, multiple content areas available and that they're able to support our student populations, um those schools that have higher multilingual learners, our students um with uh IAPs, and just making sure that they're a good fit for the individual schools.
And if I may really quickly add, Community Schools is one of those new offices that will report to me as well as of Monday. And so we'll be in close collaboration about following through with this.
Fantastic. I think I have a question out to them. So, received. All right.
Do we have, are all questions done, I think? We good? Um, is this the last component or the next one? Next to last?
This is the last one.
Okay, okay, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna uh quickly share an overview of our lessons learned from our benchmark assessments this year. So this is our fifth year that our district has been engaging in the Benchmark Assessment Program. Uh, we have been looking at the growth across our five years. We've shown about an eight percent growth across all grades and all courses, in both reading and math in our benchmarks. Uh, more specifically, when we look at Uh more specifically, when we look at um how consistent we are uh in reading and math. We are still um lower performing than we'd like to see on our reading benchmarks at this point in the year. Um however, we still have experience an average of seven percent growth across all grades. So some of our grades and contents that have shown growth this past school year in our Benchmark One and or Benchmark Two. Uh looking at mathematics, our kindergarten, our primary grades one and two, our grades seven and eight, as well as our high school mathematics courses. And then in reading, we're looking at our middle school grades and our high school grades have experienced growth on our benchmarks. More specifically, focusing on um where are areas of challenge on our benchmarks, we're uh very focused on our writing. At this point in the year, and uh we've talked as a district and planning for next school year, we plan on. Looking more closely at writing and focusing in on that skill. So in our elementary grades and grade six, we're focusing on written conventions. Uh grades three, four, and six on our written expression. Grades two, three, and five, and our middle school grades on modeling constructed response items. And then grades one, four, six, and eight on our reasoning items. More specifically, we want to focus in on our third grade. On the slide prior, we talked about a challenge for third graders and comprehension. And so that challenge also expands onto our benchmark assessment program. So at this point in the year, um our students in third grade, Benchmark One. Fifty-three percent of our students were emerging learners, and that's actually an increase from the prior year. Of sixty-three percent of our uh, I'm sorry, forty-three percent of our students on emerging learning. Our Benchmark Two, we had about thirty-four percent of our third graders who were emerging learning, and that was actually an increase from the year prior. About three percentage points. Um and looking at specifically writing. We're looking at about twenty-seven percent of our students in third grade meeting expectations on Benchmark One and Writing. And thirty-five percent of our students in third grade on Benchmark Two Writing. So you know, that, that's definitely a challenge that we want to address next year. Uh and we will be meeting over the summer uh with our office and the Office of Transformational Improvement and Academics. And planning on how we will help support our schools and our teachers and professional development on writing.
Thank you, Jamie, and so when looking at the adjustments for the upcoming school year. Uh we have what are called constructive responses that students have to um. To answer and we will continue to hold scoring sessions um. Around these, the, around benchmark scoring. Um this will allow our teachers to ensure that they're effectively scoring their student constructed responses. Um we want to provide more opportunities for uh students, for teachers, I'm sorry, to discuss. The, uh more of their norm scoring decisions. Um we talk about our scoring done in collective groups, so it's not just the teacher sitting. And scoring them all by themselves. Um we want to, through these scoring sh- sessions, include training on identifying patterns. Um talk through some of the instructional planning, so what we're seeing in. The way our students are answering the questions, um what are some of the common areas of weakness? And looking at where that reteaching needs to happen. We are also planning to revise the scoring guide. Um with sample constructive responses to further support our teachers. And to use that scoring guide for professional development opportunities. Um we plan to also, we've heard writing a couple of times this evening, so we're looking to. Offer targeted professional development focused on aligning our curriculum, instruction, and assessment. With an emphasis on improving student writing through a deeper dive into. An understanding of the writing expectations at each grade level, so really, really looking closely at that standards alignment. Um talking about strategies for designing lessons. And again, providing that ongoing training on how we use that data. Um and with that, and the revised scoring guide will continue to provide. Professional learning opportunities um within our professional learning communities over the course of next school year. Any questions?
I just said board members, is there any question in my mute, I was muted. Board members, are there any questions? Um Ms. Gordon McGants?
Now you hit on this briefly at the end of um, at the end of what you were saying. But specifically, well, when you all brought this before the full board, we had a lot of questions around writing. And we did get to speak with Dr. Bowers about what this looks like and. How um some of these assessments are, the numbers of our students who aren't completing the assessments. Do we have anything specifically in the professional development or plans in general about how we're strengthening students? I guess their stamina, their capacity, what we're doing in general about them specifically. Being able to get through the writing portion, and I know you hit on it a little bit earlier, but specifically around benchmarks, because this is where we had that question.
Um I, one of the things that we plan to do is to, we've, we've emphasized. The reading and the writing, but helping our teachers understand, in a sense, um. The time element that's needed and um the scaffolding that is needed within their lessons. In order to um continue to teach writing. I think what's um we are being, we, what we've heard from a lot of our teachers is they need more. Uh direction on that explicit part of it. Um it's, it's, they're doing a great job with modeling some of the aspects, but just further support on. The explicit instruction and the scaffolding. Um providing more support to our teachers so that they could support our students. And we were looking in our curriculum documents at how we can strengthen. The language within with models and um explanations. For our teachers to further support their students.
And also with the um focus that Leona mentioned within, within those weekly data meetings. Um that will also be on writing, that will ensure that we're talking about writing, that we're looking at student writing and giving. Feedback on student writing, so if we keep it as a focus um both there and in the curriculum and in our professional development. We know that our students um will have just more exposure and our teachers uh as well. One of the things um that we're working with Dr. Bowers on and Simone and her team and some of the other um content area teams. Is just making sure that teachers are scoring the writing that students do, and so those reminders. Um that that is a, a portion of the benchmark that does need. Um them to give feedback to students and to use that feedback to tailor their instruction to meet students' needs.
And I would just add that we are um after each benchmark assessment. When it's time for scoring, there are scoring um sessions for uh professional development. Where they're able to calibrate their understanding of the rubric as well as looking at samples scoring together. So that all uh participants are um utilizing the rubric and understanding. How they are aligning what students are writing with what the rubric requires.
Thank you all so much.
Board members, is there any other questions?
No other questions for me.
Okay, I think this was the last component or um. Just want to make sure. Okay, um thank you again. Um this presentation was insightful, learned a lot. Thank you so much again, I just wanted to make sure to say that. Um shoot, find the. Okay, so we will now be moving on to. Is it three point? Three point one, um. Oh wait, no?
A German.
Oh, I think it's a German, yeah, and if there's anything else to discuss, right, um. Thank you for everyone for the, thank you everyone for the great presentations. Any follow-ups from tonight's meeting will, will be shared upon receipt. As this will be my final meeting serving as the honorable role as the Academic Achievement Committee Chair. With my term as the student member of the board soon coming to close. I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to serve, it has truly been a privilege to work alongside all of you in the support of our students. There being no further business, the time is now six fifty-seven PM. And the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five Academic Achievement Committee is now adjourned. Thank you to everyone for a great meeting tonight.